Regular meeting number forty-five will now come to order. May you stand for the playing of the national anthem. Councilmember Tyson, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we were going to have Bishop Donald J. Washington here to pray with us. I'm going to actually take some privilege and turn it over to Councilmember Brown. I was wondering if this would be a good time to do a moment of silence for a loss that we've held in our community, or in our country. Sorry for the audible.
Thank you, Council President. First, I'd like to recognize the passing of Secretary of State Colin Powell from complications of COVID-19 virus. Serving as the first African-American chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff and Secretary of State, Secretary Powell left an indelible mark on our nation and the men and women who have served in our United States military. I personally had the opportunity to meet Secretary Powell on multiple occasions. It was an honor to spend time with a man of his integrity, and I would like to ask for a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
We'll start with resolutions or announcements from councilmembers, starting with President Protem.
Thank you, President Harden. I am very excited tonight to offer a resolution recognizing and celebrating the tenth anniversary of the City Leaders Program. You all may rise now. There are quite a few, and Ms. Sheri Lynn was just telling me about the efforts to make sure we had a wonderful, strong, talented class of city leaders for our tenth year coming off of COVID-19, which is no easy task. So, the City Leaders Program was established in 2012 to develop the Columbus Leaders of Tomorrow by providing mentorship and learning opportunities for middle school students. Each student maintains a 3.0 GPA, has successfully completed essays and interviews demonstrating a commitment to leadership and to the city, and has been recommended by a teacher or member of the community. The Columbus Recreation and Parks Department administers the City Leaders Program free of charge. It has served more than 160 families over its ten years of existence. The goal is to educate and inspire these students to become model citizens, role models in their schools and community, and future leaders in Columbus. I had the opportunity to meet hands, or meet hands, to meet folks and shake hands before the meeting tonight, and it's such a pleasure to see your enthusiasm that you have for our city. Director Sheri Lynn Nguyen, thank you for joining us. Would you like to say a few words about the City Leaders Program and your students, please?
Yes, thank you to Council President Harden, to Councilmember Protem, Elizabeth Brown, and members of council. Good evening, and thank you so much for acknowledging these young people. They are, of course, the next wave of leadership for our city. So it's our program's mission to assure that they meet all the great people and visit all the great places that make our city the great opportunity city that it is. We're currently celebrating our tenth year, and we are so excited. We'll be celebrating in a big way with a big fundraising brunch coming up in May of 2022, and you'll all be invited to support. We also have a large alumni group. We've had 140 city leaders come through the program in the past ten years. Those selected for the academy, as you said, Councilmember Protem, is they must maintain a 3.0 grade point average. They had to write two essays on leadership, submit a letter of recommendation from an administrator, teacher, or community leader, and these are our future. Our alumni, some of our alumni have gone on to be the youngest homeowner in the state at age nineteen. Two are professional golfers and just recently presented to the State Board of Education, advocating for a youth presence on that board, and there's also been conversation about this council as well. Many have gone on to college, and they're receiving chances at international study. They've received academic scholarships, and some have gone into the military and some are entrepreneurs. Thank you for acknowledging the existence of this program. I thank my Recreation and Parks leadership, my staff member, Mr. Dennis Evans, who has been with me since August, and to the parents that are here today and that, some that couldn't make it, and our partners that provide funds and experiences for these young people. You are the true heroes, and we thank you. And I'm sure you want to meet them.
Yes, and I also understand that part of the program is working on your public speaking skills, so we're going to put you on the spot and have everyone please introduce themselves. And Ms. Nguyen, you can organize.
Yeah, we'll start with you, and then you go to the end of the line, and we'll do the same thing.
Hello, my name is Martha Jimenez. I go to World Language Middle School, and I am in seventh grade.
Hi, my name's Dale Ashay. I'm in the eighth grade, and I go to Arts Impact Middle School.
Hi, my name is Isaac Marshall. I am in the eighth grade, and I go to South High School.
Hello, my name is King Fraser, and I go to World Language Middle School.
Hello, my name is Amari Mason, and I go to Stewart Alternative Elementary.
Hello, my name is Ruby Stewart, and I go to Columbus Gifted Academy.
Hello, my name is Kyle Meadows, and I go to Berwick Alternative.
Hello, my name is Emma Cruz, and I go to Arts Impact Middle School.
Hello, my name is Judah Martin Jordan, and I also go to Arts Impact Middle School.
Hi, my name is Joy, and I'm an eighth grader at One School, Joy Nia Thomas.
Hello, my name is Michael Brown, and I go to Columbus Gifted Academy. I'm in eighth grade.
Hello, my name is Sydney Alateef. I'm a sixth grader at Kip Columbus Middle School.
Hello, my name's Maya Martin, and I'm a sixth grader at CSG.
Hello, my name is Safina Diop. I'm an eighth grader at Columbus Collegiate Academy.
Well, fantastic. Thank you all so much for being here, and can we have a round of applause for those public speaking skills? So, and I forgot, I was so excited to jump right in. I didn't say the resolution number, which is 0182X-2022. And are there any, if there are any comments from colleagues, Councilmember Tyson?
No, I have some. Thank you, President Protem Brown. First of all, I want to thank Sheri Lynn for her leadership for over the ten years, and certainly I have been here when she created this program, and just want to thank her for her leadership and her vision, that she certainly, and to spend ten years in a position that she truly cares about these young people and providing those leadership skills. So, I want to say thank you to Sheri Lynn, as well as all the leaders that I've worked with her, to be able to move this program forward and provide a platform for our young people. I too want to thank all the family members who have allowed their young people to be a part of this program and continue to provide them with, encouraging them to be in this program and to utilize their leadership skills. While I was sitting here, two young people, they first came in, came up, and spoke to me, and the first young lady came up and said she wrote an essay about me, and the other young person came up to me and said his mother was a part of the City Year program. And so, thinking about how long that was, and now to see one of the City Year core members, their son, and he just came up and was not intimidated, just walked up and said, "You think you know my mother, and this is her name?" And I said, "Absolutely," and he told me a little bit about himself. So, again, Council President Protem Brown, thank you so much for bringing these young people here. But again, to the young people, you are simply amazing, and you are the leaders, you're leading now by your roles that you're in, and you will continue to be the leaders of our future, and we're looking forward to your leadership skills moving us forward. So congratulations, and thank you for being here. And Sheri Lynn, you know, what can we say, amazing work. Thank you so much. Thank you, President Protem Brown.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, and with no further ado, I move for, or Council President, I move for adoption.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you again.
Is that all? All right. That's a mic drop moment. That was good. Councilmember Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Council President. I don't have any resolutions this evening, but I do have a couple announcements. October is Fire Prevention Month, and I wanted to remind residents to check to make sure the smoke alarms are working. These prevention devices are extremely important to keeping your family safe. Remember to replace the batteries every year and the smoke detector every ten years. If you'd like to request a free smoke alarm, call the American Red Cross at 1-844-207-4509 to schedule a time for a friendly volunteer to come to your home and install it for you. And finally, the Division of Fire and the Division of Police are hosting a Community Safety Day this Saturday, October 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Columbus Fire Academy, 3639 Parsons Avenue. This event will feature an opportunity to dispose of unneeded medications, free Narcan training, free bike helmets for kids, and a food drive. The Division of Police will also be hosting a gun buyback event at this location in an effort to remove dangerous weapons from our community. Again, that's this Saturday, October 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you, Council President. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Dorans.
Nothing for me tonight, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Faber.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Just a brief announcement, the Department of Development is currently undergoing a review of the city's residential CRA policy, which is the policy that was created to incentivize affordable housing development. The first community meeting will be held on Wednesday, October 27th, at 5:30 p.m. at Federson Recreational Center, located at 3911 Dresden Street. The purpose of the meeting will be to share draft policy updates and recommendations. Please reach out to Anisa Liban in my office with any questions at A-A-L-I-B-A-N@columbus.gov. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Faber. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, President Harden. Yes, I have one resolution this evening and just a few brief announcements. Have Resolution Number 180X-2021, I'm going to ask Sue Verrillo, the Assistant Vice President of Community-Based Services from Lutheran Social Services, to come to the podium. The resolution is to declare the month of October of 2021 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Columbus, and to recognize Choices for the victims of domestic violence for their ongoing efforts to raise awareness for domestic violence prevention. Whereas domestic violence impacts men, women, children of every age, background, and belief, nearly one in three women, one in four men in the United States have suffered from an intimate partner, abusive intimate partner. Whereas each year, one in fifteen children are exposed to domestic violence, and one-third of the female homicides result from domestic violence committed by an intimate partner. Last year, there were more than 17,259 domestic violence calls in Columbus and central Ohio, And whereas data from the CDC's National Intimate Partner and Sexual Violence Survey indicates that domestic violence can be diminished by educating and empowering communities to develop and maintain healthy relationship skills. Whereas Choices for victims of domestic violence have a mission to interrupt the cycle of domestic violence by responding to those in need, educating our community, and advocating for social change. Whereas Choices is a part of the Lutheran Social Services family of programs and a domestic violence safe haven in Franklin County, offering 120 beds, a 24-hour crisis and information hotline, counseling services, support groups, legal and community advocates for those impacted by domestic violence. Whereas Choices provides safe shelter to over 860 people, including 400 children in the fiscal year so far, 2021, which has equaled 45,000 nights. In addition, the 24-hour hotline received more than 4,500 calls, over 200 people were served by counseling programs, and more than 650 have been served by legal and community Whereas educating communities on the necessity of developing and maintaining healthy relationships as well as providing safe shelter and support for those in need, Choices for victims of domestic violence, along with the team of counselors, community, and legal advocates, provides a beacon of hope for those currently in abusive relationships and acts as an inspiration for others who are committed to preventing domestic violence. Now therefore be it resolved by this council of the city of Columbus. This council appreciates the importance of preventing domestic violence and does hereby recognize the month of October 2021 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Columbus. Sue, please feel free to make any comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Good evening, Council President Harden, President Protem Brown, and councilmembers and distinguished guests. Thank you so much for this recognition for Domestic Violence Awareness Month and for the work of Choices. This provides us an opportunity for people in the community to learn about the services that are available to them 24 hours a day to help victims of domestic violence find the safety that they need in our community. I also want to thank you just for your continued partnership with Choices and all of the other activities that the city of Columbus is involved in around making this community safer, particularly the Blueprint for Safety, which is a large undertaking with the city and the county, and will really result in better processes for both victims and perpetrators in a domestic violence situation. I want to take a minute, if you don't mind, to talk a little more about the services that Choices offers so that people who are listening at home know what's available to them if they or a loved one are in need. Probably the most important thing I'd like to share tonight is our crisis hotline. It is available 24 hours a day, and it is answered by trained advocates who can help people who are in a crisis situation or guide you if you're concerned about a friend or family member. That phone number is 614-224-4663, and again, it is answered 24 hours a day. We've seen about a 17% increase in calls to that crisis hotline since the start of the pandemic. About 11% of those have been initiated by police officers. So the impact of the pandemic has been striking with victims of domestic violence living in this community and their families. In addition to the hotline, we offer Safe Shelter, also available 24 hours a day. All of Choices services can be accessed through one simple phone call to that crisis hotline. So if you are in danger, you need safe shelter, Choices will be available for you 24 hours a day. In addition, we have legal advocacy, which helps people navigate the very complex legal system related to domestic violence. We have counselors located throughout the community who can help people work through the trauma that they've experienced as a result of the abuse, and we have community advocacy services for households that are in need of assistance and definitely want some assistance around safety but are not in need of coming into shelter. So again, each of those services are available through one call to our crisis hotline. Just want to share a little bit about some of the trends that we've seen in the last year. We have definitely seen an increase in need for our services. Our shelter alone has seen a 34% increase in occupancy. There's a huge number of people who are in need of safe shelter that have been coming into Choices, and as you all may recall, the city of Columbus, when Choices built its new shelter in 2019, actually built a wing on that shelter, and I shelled it in, and I'm happy to tell you that we have raised donations to complete that. That part of the building has been completed. It adds 24 beds, six bedrooms, four bathrooms, laundry area, sitting area to the shelter so that we can increase capacity within the building to meet the growing need. One of the challenges that has come with that, as I'm sure you've heard from all over this community and other communities, has been the difficulty we've had with staffing the building. We operate 24 hours a day. We need a certain minimum number of staff to keep the doors open and everyone safe and cared for while they're in the shelter. So we continue to face some staffing challenges but have implemented many procedures and practices, not only to attract new people into working at LSS Choices, but also to retain the wonderful staff that we currently have. The last issue that, again, you've heard throughout the community and will come as no surprise, is the challenge that we're having, finding housing options for victims and their families who are ready to leave shelter. It's very difficult to find housing for folks right now, and the city, again, has been part of the solution to that problem. Choices has been awarded one of the Stable Housing Initiative Grants with three of our community partners so that we can help victims and their families and survivors of domestic violence remain in their home if what they need is some safety and some financial support to be able to do that safely. So again, I just want to thank you. I thank you for your ongoing support, for you allowing me to talk about domestic violence tonight. As we know, anytime we are able to get this word out, that we'll see an increase in calls to our crisis hotline, so we know it's an opportunity to reach people who may need our services. So thank you again, and I appreciate all of you so very much.
Thank you, Sue. Can you please just share the phone number again?
I'd be happy to, thank you. It's 614-224-4663.
Thank you, and thank you for coming down and sharing what you're seeing in terms of the trends, 34% increase because of what's going on based upon being in a pandemic, and the staffing is certainly, you're right, it's an issue throughout the city, throughout, most nonprofits are dealing with this issue of staffing, but so are other businesses. And then lastly, the housing options. And, you know, we are focused on that. Councilmember Faber is definitely focused in this, and we were just having a conversation before the meeting started about, you know, this issue of housing. But again, I'm so thankful that we have a shelter for individuals to go to. I know that, I'm thankful that we're having an expansion of this facility. We wish we didn't have to have a shelter, but until we can get to that place where we don't have a shelter, we're very happy that you are there and your organization is helping families in a very difficult time in their lives. Thank you so much. And let's, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Sue? I do have one announcement, and then I think Dr. Roberts has a comment she would like to make. The announcement that I have is, again, Columbus Public Health is having a racial equity through action and learning, Talking the Talk. It will be on November the 5th, from 8:30 to 12:30 via Zoom, and you can, if you have any questions regarding the racial equity through action and learning, Talking the Talk, you can reach out to JM Dawkins at Columbus Public Health. You can go to their website, and then you can also, because you can register online. And I think Dr. Roberts will have a few comments she wants to make. Dr. Roberts?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Tyson, and good evening, Council President Harden and other members of council. Happy to be here this evening with you, and I wanted to share with you a brief update of how we're doing with COVID-19 here in Franklin County as well as in the city of Columbus. In terms of vaccination rates, we are making some progress. The city of Columbus has 49% of our residents who have completed the vaccine series. If you look at it countywide, 56% have completed the vaccine series. The good news, if there is some good news, is our positivity rate is declining here in Franklin County. This is countywide data. Our current positivity rate, seven-day positivity rate from October 9th to October 15th is now down to 5.9%. A week ago, it was estimated anywhere between 7% and 9%, so we're going in the right direction. Our 14-day positivity rate from September 29th to October 12th is down to 8.3, which is a decrease from where it was the last 14 days. So again, we're moving in the right direction. Our cases per 100,000, which is our case rate, it is dropping. It has gone down by 15% and is currently at 375 cases per 100,000. We continue to get on average about, I would say, five to 10 mask complaints a day. Sometimes we only get one a day, and we have not had to give any warning letters at this point in time. We have gone to do some inspections ourselves, and our staff have found that the agency or the entity has been in compliance. When you all passed the mask ordinance, we got several complaints a day, and again, those complaints are decreasing every single day. I think people now in our community are accustomed to the mask order and are being compliant with it, and individuals are not reporting complaints to us. Keep in mind, the mask ordinance that you all passed is complaint-driven, so we will only notify the entity or go to a site visit if we receive a complaint from the community. And it's very easy to file a complaint. You can email 311@columbus.gov, the number three, the number one, the number one, at columbus.gov, or call 311. That is the best way, in the preferred way, to file complaints, mask complaints. That's what I have at this point for vaccines, Columbus, I mean for COVID-19. Columbus Public Health continues to offer primary series. We're offering Pfizer, Moderna, and J&amp;J at Columbus Public Health, as well as three rec centers. That's the Linden Rec Center, the Barrick Rec Center, and the Westgate Rec Center, and at fire stations number 10 and number 18 on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and those are drive-through. The fire stations are drive-through clinics. At all of our clinics, we are also offering the flu vaccine, and we are offering our $100 Visa gift card for anyone who is starting their vaccine series through us at all of our locations, with the exception of the fire stations. Happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts, for giving us an update on the status of vaccines in our community and an update on COVID numbers. Thank you very much. That's all I have this evening in terms of resolutions and announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, and certainly thank you to Commissioner Roberts for her leadership on the ongoing pandemic. Are there any comments by our elected officials who are joining us virtually? Are there any comments by our elected officials who are joining us virtually from the city attorney's office or the auditor's office or any judicial representatives? Hearing none. Are this, at this time, I request the following ordinance be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda from the Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinance 2717-2021. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the clerk? Thank you. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Tyson, President Harden.
Will the clerk now read into the record ordinance number of 30-day legislation?
Finance Committee, ordinance 2532-2021. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 2430, 2449, 2452, 2483, 2522, 2525, 2566, 2578, 2584-2021. Technology Committee, ordinance 2410, 2594-2021. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 2582-2021. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee, ordinance 2536-2021. Economic Development Committee, ordinance is 2597 and 2598-2021. Zoning Committee, ordinance is 2642, 2677, 2679, and 911-2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing no speakers on the first, reading the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 185X-2021. Finance Committee, ordinance is 2371, 2379, 2412, 2467, 2512, 2634-2021. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 2045, 2311, 2549-2021. Public Safety Committee, ordinance is 2255, 2537, 2538, 2599, 2663-2021. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 2399, 2411, 2420, 2432, 2453, 2459, 2465, 2507, 2553, and 2601-2021. Technology Committee, ordinance 2545-2021. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 2445, 2474, 2541, 2554, and 2567-2021. Housing Committee, ordinance is 2562, 2563, 2564, 2565, 2571, 2595, 2611, 2612, 2613, 2614, 2615, 2616, 2617, 2637, 2638, 2639, 2640-2021. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee, ordinance 2466, 2478, 2609-2021. Economic Development Committee, ordinance 2524-2021. Administration Committee, ordinance is 2497, 2498, 2499, 2543-2021. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance 2496-2021. Small and Minority Business Committee, Resolution 184X-2021. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0179, 180, 181, 182, 183, 185, 186, 187, 188, 189, and 190-2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions or comments for the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion of approval of these items designated as consent? Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass. We will now proceed with the second reading in 30-day table of emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Utilities Committee, chaired by Councilmember Doran. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Got to me quickly tonight.
Yes.
Tonight, in the Public Utilities Committee, we have ordinance number 2369-2021. To authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Coast and Construction Company, Inc., for the Second Barrel Interconnector Augmentation Project. To authorize the appropriation and transfer of $9,488,047 from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund. To authorize the appropriation of expenditure of $9,488,047 from the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund. To authorize expenditure of up to $2,000 for preventing wage services to the Department of Public Services within the Sanitary General Obligations Voted Bond Fund. And to amend the 2020 Capital Improvement Budget. This project consists of installing 2,300 feet of 104-inch sanitary sewer between the interconnector junction chamber and the Sciota River East Bank in the far-south planning area. This will increase the capacity of the interconnector sewer and mitigate sanitary overflows and water embasements in the Franklinton area during rain events. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Housing Committee. The committee is chaired by Councilmember Favors. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Tonight in housing, we have ordinance 2610-2021. To authorize the Director of Department of Development to execute any and all necessary agreements and deeds for conveyance of title of one parcel of real property located at 1013 to 1015 E 16th Avenue, held in the land bank pursuant to the land reutilization program and to declare an emergency. This land bank property will be transferred to Health Linden Homes LLC, for Healthy Neighborhoods, Healthy Families, initiative to build affordable housing in the South Linden neighborhood. I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Director Hannah Jones to provide us with some additional details on this program.
Good evening. President Harden, Chair Favors, ladies and gentlemen, to speak this evening. This ordinance represents one of 12 ordinances that are before council tonight that will help create 22 units of housing in the Linden community. H&amp;H F is focused on diversity of both homeownership and rental, and is looking to also partner with the Land Trust in the next year to continue to preserve and stabilize housing in the Linden community.
Thank you. This is an incredibly exciting program. Obviously, as we're continuing to fight and advocate for affordable housing, it's really good to know that we have champions like Healthy Neighborhoods, Healthy Families, excuse me, doing some great work now in the Linden community as well. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? I believe we do have one speaker tonight. Mr. Nate? Welcome back to council.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. I know we always talk about healthy homes, but I don't know what that looks like in to my scope of my eyes of vision. But all I do know, this property has sit vacant for quite some time, holding in the land bank before it got to state of Ohio forfeiture foreclosure in May 16, 2016. And then it transferred again to the same organization, to the County Land Bank. I just don't understand why vacant property sits unidilized and untouched before something gets done with it. What I don't see is refurbishing vacant homes. I know there's been massive demolition out here. I put it up on the Franklin County Auditor's website, 1013 to 1015, on the Franklin County Auditor's website. It doesn't look like this today, but it looks like a vacant land today. I'm all asking you, if you're going to construct a healthy home like this in Linden or South Linden, we want to see what this is going to look like. Not just put one on one retrodental street, putting five on retrodental streets, so we can see what this looks like. Because when I notice something that's been torn down, there's no scope that says what was there before and after, what's coming soon. As I looked on the Franklin County Auditor's website, we see a vacant land today. I just would like to know, to more clarify indication, what is a healthy home look like? Even though that was a duplex in that lot, I'd like to see the same structure, same make and model of that. I'm tired of losing a lot of these vacant homes that's historical to the area. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, for your continued advocacy for the Linden community. I will just say that from your research, you were able to find that this property was transferred by way of forfeiture. Generally, those properties take a considerable amount of time if they're not automatically donated to the city, to the land bank. And so, we have to go through the court process of obtaining legal ownership of the properties, and I believe that's what this property falls into. And then, as far as what a healthy home looks like, Healthy Neighborhoods, Healthy Families is just the name of the initiative by Nationwide, does a lot of home building and development on the south side of Columbus. So, Ms. Jones, would you like to make any additional comments in regards to Mr. Wilkins' testimony this evening?
We usually have our organizations go out and engage with area commissions and share drawings and designs, so I'm sure there'll be plenty of opportunity that we can make sure that Mr. Wilkins is able to see with the structures that are proposed for that area.
And once again, this is just one of 12 properties that are being legislated tonight that will go into the Healthy Neighborhoods, Healthy Families initiative in the Linden community. These properties were in the land bank and will now be designated as affordable housing for Linden residents. So, with that, I would move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. May I move on to criminal justice?
Please.
Thank you. Tonight, we have ordinance 2570-2021. To authorize and direct the administrative and presiding judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to enter into a nonprofit service contract with Think Make Live Youth for a caseworker dedicated to the Unleashing Potential Program, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $73,100 for services from the general fund and to declare an emergency. The Unleashing Potential Program will provide transformative justice for emerging adults who have come into contact with our justice system and are at risk for continued criminal behavior due to lack of resources and support system. Think Make Live will hire a caseworker to provide support to the program participants and develop a plan to assist with navigating public assistance programs, identification, and transportation needs, treatment providers, housing specialists, career and education counselors, and community mentors. Would Judge Barrows or Judge DeVarga happen to be on this evening? Okay, just wanted to make sure. I know they wanted to make a few remarks. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Council President, may I move on to rules and reference?
Please.
In rules and reference, we have ordinance 1811-2021. To enact, amend, and repeal various sections of Title 21, traffic code of the Columbus City Codes to modernize several city code sections and fine amounts. Earlier this year, I held two public hearings to discuss amendments to the city's traffic code that determine how inoperable vehicles are removed from our neighborhoods. Ultimately, our goal is to make it easier to enforce the rules and assist our police officers in removing problem vehicles from the streets, and help in eliminating blight and keeping our streets safer. I would like to turn it over to Director Gallagher and her team to speak more about these changes and their impact moving forward. Director Gallagher?
Thank you, Councilmember Favors. I actually have Assistant Director Robert Farron with me this evening, and I'm going to give the floor to him. Thank you.
Allen Burney, evening.
Good evening.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. Good evening, President Harden, Chair Favors, and members of the city council. I am pleased to provide an overview of the Title 21 code changes before you for approval this evening. The majority of these code changes are focused on simplifying and creating consistencies in the abandoned junk and inoperable vehicle codes. Simplifying and creating consistencies in these code sections will lead to positive outcomes for our neighborhoods by improving access, safety, and quality of life for our residents. Columbus, like many large cities, is challenged by abandoned and inoperable vehicles being stored on public streets. The current code as written is inconsistent, is vague in its language and application, leading to loopholes in the process, and does not align with codes pertaining to the storage of abandoned vehicles, excuse me, with codes pertaining to the storage of abandoned and operable vehicles on private property. While these code changes will not solve the challenges at hand, they will provide an important tool to improve access, safety, and quality of life for our residents. In addition to these code changes, codes have been updated to mirror the Ohio Revised Code and address operational challenges related to parking enforcement in our high-demand parking areas. Happy to answer any specific questions that members of council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farron. Are there any questions? Yes, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Councilmember Favors. Mr. Farron, can you give us an idea what the fee costs are that are going to be projected with regards to abandoned vehicles? Is there going to be like a warning notice for a vehicle three days, 24 hours, 72 hours? Could you answer that question, please?
Yes, Councilmember Brown, the revised language would actually increase the amount of time that a vehicle would have to be removed from the street from 48 hours to 72 hours. These are complaint-based, complaint-based situations through 311. Those are directed to the police impound unit, and they will visit those properties and those vehicles. They will typically mark them and notice them. They will also, certainly depending on the situation, try to make contact with the registered owner. After 72 hours, if the vehicle has not moved, they will return to that site, and they can ticket that vehicle. At that point, they can also tow it, or they can provide, either tow it or actually provide additional time. So, we are increasing that to 72 hours to 48 hours. That will now be consistent with maximum continuous parking of operable vehicles, so that there's consistency between both codes. We're also reducing the fine amount from $89 to $30. That is also consistent with the operable continuous, operable continuous parking code.
Also, the question of how long will the vehicle be allowed to remain in the impound lot before it is subject to disposal?
Councilmember Brown, I'd have to follow the police on that. I am not exactly sure how long those vehicles remain before they are either junked or auctioned. I do know the average time is certainly quite lengthy, but I can follow CPD on that. Get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Excuse me. Are there any additional questions or concerns? Well, with that, I would move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Favors, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. It looks like the first piece of legislation will be read by President Protim. Madam Chair, is it okay to pass it to Protim?
Yes, please.
All right.
Thank you so much, Chair Tyson. Tonight, in Health and Human Services, we have ordinance 2576-2021. To authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with the Young Men's Christian Association of Central Ohio, doing business as YMCA of Central Ohio, in an amount up to $2 million of federal American Rescue Plan Act funds to provide rental support to tenants as they are relocated in anticipation of the sale of the organization's current facility. To authorize the Director of Development to modify the terms and conditions of the agreement as needed without seeking further city council approval, to assure that the agreement aligns with the most current federal guidance and requirements. To authorize the expenditure of up to $2 million of ARPA funds and to declare an emergency. The YMCA currently provides affordable housing and wraparound services to chronically homeless individuals at its 40 West Long Street facility. The YMCA has begun the process of relocating tenants due to prohibitively high ongoing maintenance costs and the anticipated sale of the building. The relocation plan includes transitional housing and supportive services, placement in support, in permanent supportive housing developments, and access to housing vouchers through CMHA. The funding being allocated through this ordinance will provide rental support to the tenants while in the transitional phase. And Franklin County will provide $2 million in support to this effort as well. We are amending this ordinance to 30-day legislation so that these dollars can be deployed as soon as possible. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I first request to amend to 30-day.
Clerk, please call the row.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Abstain.
President Harden?
Yes.
I next wave -- move to waive second reading by voice.
Clerk, please call the row.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Abstain.
President Harden?
Yes, waived.
I next move for passage by voice.
Clerk, please call the row.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
President Harden?
Yes, passed.
Thank you, Council President. I have, if you and Chair Tyson are fine with it, I have 2577 next. 2577-2021 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a not-for-profit service contract with the Community Shelter Board in an amount up to $4,905,000 to provide financial support for 38 mental health specialists to the organization's emergency shelter and permanent supportive housing programs, to authorize the Director of Development to modify the terms and conditions of the not-for-profit service contract as needed without seeking further City Council approval in order to align with the most current version of the federal laws, regulations, and guidance, to authorize the expenditure of up to $4,905,000 of ARPA funds, and to declare an emergency. Emergency shelters and permanent supportive housing are experiencing an increase in mental health challenges and substance dependence. This trend began before the COVID-19 pandemic and accelerated during this health emergency. Crisis situations resulting from these challenges greatly increase the number of calls to police and emergency services, which the city of Columbus is responsible for, which is often not the most appropriate or cost-effective response. Deescalating volatile mental health crises require specialized intervention techniques that police officers often can't provide. The Community Shelter Board will utilize the funding being allocated through this ordinance to embed 38 mental health specialists trained in crisis intervention onsite in their programs to reduce deaths and violence, to better support our vulnerable neighbors, and to reduce the need and cost of police and ambulance runs that, again, our city is responsible for. In coordination with Adam H., the Community Shelter Board, Columbus State, and Netcare, will create a workforce development program with training, certification, and continuing education to develop specialists with the appropriate skills and expertise to fill these new positions. These crisis response specialists will receive training tailored to people experiencing homelessness. Shelter and housing partners will commit to hire program graduates at a competitive, above-living-wage pay rate with good benefits. Graduates will commit to serve in the homelessness system for at least 12 months. Franklin County is also providing funding for this initiative. The city will continue to work closely with the Community Shelter Board and Adam H. to develop the services and supports to meet the crisis needs of these vulnerable community members. Today, we are requesting to amend this ordinance to 30-day legislation so that these dollars can be deployed soon. We'll offer a moment for comments for my colleagues, and I know we also have a speaker via WebEx. I think we'll go straight to speaker then. Is Ms. Nana Watson with us via WebEx?
I'm here.
Hi, hi, Ms. Watson. We can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President Harden and members of council. I'm here to speak against legislation 2577-2021. I am Nana Watson, president of the Columbus branch of the NAACP. Please indulge me as I read a letter that was sent to the Columbus Dispatch. The Columbus branch of the NAACP was appalled to read in the October 7 edition of the Columbus Dispatch over 350,000 stolen from the Community Shelter Board. If this occurred in an agency whose CEO was black, for example, the Columbus Urban League, IMPACT, and the list goes on, YWCA, CMHA, and others, they would have been fired immediately, and a forensic audit would be conducted. We do know the individual who stole the money was fired. However, the CEO should have been as well for not having necessary financial safeguards in place. She perhaps is just as guilty. The Shelter Board is recipient of taxpayers' dollars, and we certainly expect more and we demand more. The Board just received 4.9 million from the federal American Rescue Plan. The city of Columbus has assured the NAACP guardrails are in place for dispersing these funds. Rest assured, we will be watching. Shame on the Community Shelter Board and the individuals who serve on the Board. The NAACP is now calling for the reimagining of the Community Shelter Board leadership and board. I did make calls and send an email to council this morning. I would have hoped to have had a conversation with the hope that maybe I would not have to speak. Did not. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Watson, for taking your time to join us this evening virtually and give your testimony. We appreciate your diligence and the diligence of the NAACP when it comes to soundness of organizational leadership, particularly on an issue that is as critical as our homelessness system. And the city of Columbus is focused on the guardrails in place to ensure these dollars are spent correctly and appropriately on the very important, very worthy aims of this program, to get crisis intervention specialists within our system, which has been tried and taxed in so many ways in these last 18 months. Thank you again for joining us. Are there any comments from my colleagues?
Sure.
Council President?
President Protim, thank you so much for leading this, and thank you, President Watson, for your oversight and providing accountability to the Shelter Board, but also to the Columbus community. As President Protim said, we feel comfortable in that with these dollars, we've been assured that there are the guardrails, but also the specific program that this is funding is so crucially important to our community's efforts of reimagining public safety and thinking about and reducing police costs to an agency that has seen far too many interactions between mentally ill folks and our police officers. And so while on the one hand, we have to hold this agency accountable, on the other hand, we have to make sure that we are reducing those interactions or at least baiting these since COVID. So appreciate your leadership and look forward to engaging both publicly but also privately as we move forward.
President -- thank you, President Harden. Before I move for passage, oh, Councilmember Brown.
To speak to the issue that I think is really important, and that is the demand for services with regards to police and fire, having to respond to mental health circumstances. Anytime you can have a situation where you don't have to call police, or you don't have to call fire, and that takes them away from their primary responsibilities, any kind of program that will help assist us, assist them in that regard is absolutely invaluable. I don't disregard the fact of the concern about finances with regards to this issue, but certainly the amount of time that it takes away from the need and call for services for police and fire for these kinds of circumstances, if there's a better way to deal with that, then I'm all for it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. I did want to also, I know that the Department of Development worked closely with Community Shelter Board on this proposal and wanted to give Assistant Director Jones an opportunity to contribute to. I believe you are with us virtually, Ms. Jones.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Brown. The only thing that I would add to what you've already stated is that we have very specific monitoring and compliance rules that came with the American Rescue Plan, and we're working closely with our Department of Finance to ensure that we're implementing those appropriately so that we can make sure that the guardrails that you spoke of are in place with regard to this proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. No further comments or questions. I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
By voice.
Oh.
I apologize.
I'm sorry. I first have to do the whole thing. First, request to amend to 30-day by voice.
Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Abstain.
President Harden?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to move to waive second reading by voice.
Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Abstain.
President Harden?
Yes, waived.
And I'd like to move for passage by voice.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Abstain.
President Harden?
Yes, passed.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The final committee to come before council is the Small and Minority Business Committee. I chair that committee. I have ordinance 2717-2021 to approve the report of the assessment author Equalization Board appointed in connection with the Plan of Services for the Short North Special Improvement District of Columbus, Inc., including no changes to the estimated assessment recommended by the Board and to declare an emergency. Based on Ohio Revised Code, the city must convene an Equalization Board whenever there is an objection to a special improvement district assessment. That board met last week regarding a single objection to the assessment. Community members who were not impacted by the Sid served on the board. The objector opted not to attend the Equalization Board meeting. After hearing the written objection, the board moved to not uphold the objection. The purpose of this legislation is to approve the Equalization Board's report and move forward with the assessment. Are there any questions from my colleagues? First, I move to amend the legislation to 30-day.
Clerk, please call the row.
By voice.
Ms. Brown?
Abstain.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. Next, I move to waive second reading. Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. And finally, I move for passage by voice. Clerk, please call the row.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. Ordinance is passed.
See no further business to come before council. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We'll go right into non-agenda speakers.
-- want to take advantage of the program. The issue involving gun violence is not going to go away casually. It's a very, very significant issue, but this council has taken some responsible positions with regards to the issue and will continue to do so. And we'll see how well people participate with regards to gun violence.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, which is council variance 2490, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, please answer, I will. Thank you very much. This ordinance is to grant a variance from the provisions of section 3332.035 R3 Residential District for the property located at 933, 935 East 12th Avenue, to permit a two-unit dwelling on the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Healthy Linden Homes LLC, care of Jonathan Alexander. The proposed use is a two-unit dwelling, and the City Department's recommendation is approval, and the South Linden Area Commission's recommendation is approval, and it was unanimous. There are, there aren't any speakers this evening, so I first move to accept the entire report into evidence as an exhibit.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you, I would like to amend to emergency.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you, I would like to amend to emergency.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and lastly, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is also a variance, it's ordinance 2491-2021. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. The applicant is Healthy Linden Homes LLC, care of Jonathan Alexander. Proposed use is a two-unit dwelling, the City Department's recommendation is approval, the City Department's recommendation, City Department's recommendation is approval, the South Linden Area Commission's recommendation is also approval, and it was unanimous. One, I accept the entire report into evidence as an exhibit, and there are no speaker slips, and so I first move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
I'd like to amend to emergency.
Sorry, clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you, now I'd like to amend to emergency.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you, and lastly, I'd like to move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. This is variance 2492-2021. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, please answer, I will. Thank you. This is ordinance, this ordinance is to grant a variance from the provisions of section 3332.035 R3 Residential District for the property located at 960 and 962 Chittenden Avenue, to permit a two-unit dwelling in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Healthy, Healthy Linden Homes LLC, care of Jonathan Alexander. The proposed use is a two-unit dwelling, the City Department's recommendation is approval, and the South Linden Area Commission's recommendation is also approval. There are no speaker slips for this particular ordinance, and so I first like to move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you, and I'd like to amend to emergency.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
And lastly, I'd like to move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance 839-2021 to rezone 3981 Bowen Road, being 32.9 acres located at the southwest corner of Bowen Road and Long Road, from PUD 6 to planned unit development district to LARLD Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Landale Commons LLC, care of Attorney Jill Tangman. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development, and the greater, and the City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Greater Southeast Air Commission's recommendation was, was disapproval 623. And I want to just share, there aren't any speakers here for this particular ordinance, and there have been a number of conversations with that particular area. and there have been a number of conversations with that particular area commission, and the reason that we do not have speakers here, and they were elated, is that there is going to be, on my note, is because their real issue with this was not that they did not want this development, it was really about some of the traffic in that community and a lot of development going on. But, we are, after having conversations with public service, we are beginning a preliminary engineering study of gender road from where the I seventy project ends to Winchester Pike at the beginning of twenty-twenty-two. And they're currently are advertising for consultant services in October of this year. The study will determine the future roadway needs, including traffic, roadway, lighting, pedestrian, and drainage. And when I had this conversation with the air, with two of the members of the Air Commission, the chairperson and the, and the previous chairperson, they were elated that this was going on. And they are not here today, and that was their issue. And so if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I would first ask to amend to emergency.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Tyson, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. I would now like to amend, ask the minute to the clerk.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Tyson, President Harden.
Amended, sorry.
Thank you. And now I'd like to move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
All right, thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number ten seventy dash twenty-twenty-one, is to rezone fifty-three sixty-four Thompson Road, being three point eight-four acres, located on the north side of Thompson Road, three hundred ninety feet east of Preservation Avenue, from the R rural district to the AR one apartment residential district. The applicant is fifty-three sixty-four Thompson Road LLC, care of attorney David Hodge. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northland Community Council's recommendation is disapproval eleven-three to two. I'm first going to ask for a staff presentation. Ms. Pine?
Good evening. The subject site is comprised of a single parcel, developed with a single-unit dwelling, zoned in the R rural district, as the result of annexation from Plain Township in twenty-twenty. The applicant proposes the AR one apartment residential district to permit a multi-unit residential development. The site is within the planning area of the Northland Plan Volume Two, which recommends preserve district for this location, calling for a mix of single and multi-unit residential development with some commercial uses. Concurrent council variance ordinance number ten seventy-one dash twenty-twenty-one proposes an eighty-eight unit apartment complex with a perimeter yard variance along the north and east, where adjacent to another apartment complex. The requested AR one district is consistent with the Northland Plan Volume Two recommendation for mixed residential development. The site plan and building elevation submitted with the concurrent variance are compatible with the adjacent residential developments, and include a central open space, pedestrian connectivity throughout the development, and additional setbacks and screening to the west in consideration of the adjacent single-unit subdivision. Therefore, the City Department's recommendation is for approval, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. Are there any questions for Ms. Pine? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a presentation from the applicant, Attorney David Hodge. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Hodge.
Good evening, Chair Tyson, President Harden, members of council, David Hodge, attorney for the applicant and the owner of this property. This project has been a long time coming. We, I was talking with my client earlier, this was the first area commission meeting that we had after COVID, when it, when it was virtual, so it was a new experience for us initially. This is a property that's a leftover piece of property. It didn't annex in when all of the adjacent properties developed. Our request is for multifamily residential, which preferred living is, is known for locally. The property to the north of this is multifamily residential development currently. The property to the east of this is multifamily, and the property to the south of this is multifamily. So, the land use that, that preferred living proposes here is, in fact, an appropriate use of the property. We are at a density that is consistent with densities to the north, east, and south, and as was stated in the staff report, it's a land use that is supported by the Northland Plan. We're here this evening with a staff recommendation of approval, with Development Commission recommendation of approval. I think that vote was five to one in support. We have engaged in earnest with some of the surrounding property owners, folks that live in the Mayfair bungalows to the west. Unfortunately, we were never able quite to reach an accord with the Mayfair neighbors, but we have attempted to work with them to mitigate some of their concerns that, that have been expressed through Northland and, and to date. What we did to address their concerns is shift everything to the east on the property and create a very significant buffer over here along the west. The code minimum perimeter yard is twenty-five feet. Over here on our west side, we have fifty-seven feet over to this building, thirty-seven feet over to a low garage structure, and then forty-seven feet over here to a pool. This act, this building over here is much farther than that, it's about eighty-five or so feet, I believe. Within that significant setback is also a fence that runs from the northern property line down to the setback, and that's a six-foot fence that comes on both sides of the garage. And within that thirty-seven feet, we've committed to do evergreen buffers, deciduous trees to, to create a screen there. Now, the buildings that are proposed on the property are the buildings that you see here. These are really well-done buildings. I mean, the architecture speaks for itself. The side of the building that we talked about, so, again, we flipped everything so just the sides of the building are along the Mayfair bungalows, that side of the building is what you see in this facade. So it's really quality architecture, a high-quality project, a, a great local developer that's invested much in the provision of housing all over town. As I was sitting out in the hall before the meeting, I happened to get caught up on some news and saw a Business First article that from the first quarter of twenty-twenty, rental rates in Columbus are up thirteen point one percent. You know, why is that? Of course, all of you know this, and all of you deal with this every day, but we have, we don't have enough housing in this community, whether it's single-family, whether it's multifamily, whether it's condominiums. Providing housing of any nature is certainly an important thing in our community currently. That's part of what we are trying to do here, is, is provide some, some quality housing, and it's a great project, supported by the plan, supported by the Development Commission, supported by staff. I'll stop there, and I'll do my best to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. Are there any questions?
They, they are market rate.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Councilmember. What about traffic? Was there a traffic study done?
There, a, a traffic study was not warranted. From, after we, from the time of the original filing, we originally were, were meeting up with these two access points down to the south. We ultimately concluded that this one access point is adequate to serve the site. We, we work, as we do with any rezoning request or development request, we worked with the Public Service Department, and, and they have determined that, that, that this access point is adequate, and we're not going to unduly burden Thompson Road with, with traffic.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dorance.
David, can you tell us what changes have been made to the project after that initial meeting with the, the folks in the community?
Sure. And I'm, I'm actually thrilled you asked that question, because it leaves out a very important part of, of what I needed to tell you. So, in terms of the orientation of some of these buildings, the shifting of some of this to the east, the commitment to the fence, so that is in part as a result of, of working with the Mayfair bungalows neighbors, really from the initial interaction we had with them at the Northland Community Council. So, we worked to try to provide a generous buffer here and shift everything over to the east. What we've also committed to do is, so this one's a little harder to read since it's in black and white, but, but here's the site. This red, if you can see that, indicates the fence that I mentioned earlier. We've committed to come off-site along the Mayfair bungalow's property. It's got to be on, it's got to be on the property line, and come up and line that with a fence that's going to come over and extend around their entire perimeter. Folks at the bungalows have expressed some concerns about, folks that live in apartments come over and sit in their gazebo, they've got a very nice gazebo here. I've met with them there a couple times, so it's, it's very nice. Sometimes folks meander over. I think sometimes folks that are visiting, the people that live in apartments will come out here and park down here, which has been bothersome to them. I think sometimes kids that live in some of the apartments have come over here to tinker around in this pool for tadpoles or whatever. That's been bothersome, so we committed to come up here along their entire perimeter. There are other apartments that are going to be constructed up here that's already zoned for that, come up along the entire perimeter and do a six-foot fence.
Are there any additional questions for Attorney Hodge? And thank you for asking that question, Councilmember Dorance. We had a whole list of, of, of changes that, that we have asked for, that, no, we've just asked for, but based on the meetings, based on what the staff has asked for, of the changes that were made by the applicant. And there'll be another opportunity to ask Attorney Hodge questions once we hear from the residents, not the residents, but we have three speakers, not residents, obviously, but we have three speakers, and then we'll hear from the Northland Community Council, which is the body that, that voted on this particular piece of legislation. So, we will now hear from the, we'll hear if we ask, Mr. Anthony Kandari, Kandari, I'm going to say that correct. Thank you. Thank you. Please come to the podium, and he is against the project, and you have three minutes to share your comments as to why you oppose it.
Thank you. Good evening. My property borders the fifty-three sixty-four Thompson Road property. I would like to inform you of five concerns that I and my wife have about the zoning change application. First, the Northland Community Council voted eleven to three to not approve the zoning change. This was not a seven to six vote. The NCC chairman presented very detailed reasons to the Development Commission as to why the NCC voted overwhelmingly eleven to three on a motion to disapprove the zoning change application. Number two, the development staff reviewed traffic impact for ninety-eight apartments, which was the original proposal, and approved the fifty-three sixty-four project from that standpoint. What the staff didn't know was that the developer was going forward with a second project with an additional two-hundred-and-four apartments in the same immediate area. This means that Thompson Road will be impacted by almost five-hundred cars and additional delivery vehicles, moving vehicles, Ubers, et cetera. Number three, density green space construction. The density of the proposed apartment units per acre is greater than other Thompson Road apartment complexes. Apartment tenants already use the green space of Mayfair bungalows and the fifty-three sixty-four Thompson Road development to walk and exercise their dogs. Mayfair bungalow homeowners have highlighted the ongoing unaddressed intrusions of apartment people using private Mayfair bungalow facilities, and we expect intrusions from the residents of the new apartment complex. The developer committed to Mayfair bungalow homeowners that they would install fencing. This fencing is not on the plans, which was the perimeter fencing that Attorney Hodge mentioned. Impact on property values. News of the future apartment complex has affected property values in Mayfair bungalows. The developer, the builder of fifty-three sixty-four Thompson Road, sold the spec house next to my house in July twenty-nineteen. Due to a job relocation, the homeowner sold it a year later and lost twenty-seven thousand dollars in a hot seller's market. The announcement of the apartment development definitely impacted this home selling price compared to other identical Mayfair bungalow homes sold in the same time period. One, I think, was within a week of this one. You may think it is not pertinent to the zoning change request, but it is important to state that Preferred Living's senior leadership is the Mayfair bungalows HOA board. This developer-controlled HOA board has abused the rights of the homeowners of the HOA by putting Preferred Living's corporate interests first and keeping the HOA homeowners in the dark as to their plans. Why? The obvious answer is to avoid homeowner opposition to their building plans. In closing, we are not against the property owner developing his property, only against the high-density development that this developer wants to build and flip, that adds more apartments to an area already oversaturated with apartments, has insufficient green space, significantly increases traffic congestion on Thompson Road, and impacts adjoining property values of the homeowners of the Mayfair bungalows community. Finally, I need to again stress that the NCC recommended not approving this zoning change by an eleven to three vote for the same reasons I just stated. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Favor has a question.
Maybe just point of clarification, really for maybe Councilmember Tyson or someone from service. Why the, why we didn't require a traffic study? Do we know?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me. This property did not require a traffic study. It was under the threshold of two-hundred trips, so it doesn't require a traffic study, just an access study, which is a study of where their access point goes. So, no impact study on this one.
Thank you.
Would you like a copy of the remarks?
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask the?
President Harden?
Thank you. I'm just having a question regarding the, the, you spoke about the, yes, sir. You spoke about the, the folks that are, been, been coming over, folks from the other apartment. Are there, are there other factors in, in, like, are there safety concerns there? Like, what is it there? Have there, are there, I hear something about a gazebo, it must be a nice gazebo, the kids are doing kids' things in the gazebo. It's like, what is the, what is that?
The gazebo is an attractive nuisance. It's adjoining to the property of the Palmer House Apartments. It has a fire pit, it has a Weber grill in it, fans, and it, in the immediate vicinity is also another retention pond, stormwater drainage retention pond, and there is no signage that tells the apartment tenants that this is not part of their facilities. So they wander over, and John Davis will speak more to that in this presentation. But in, in short, you got the safety issues with the, the fire pit and the grill.
For, for the, for the kids from the apartment, so they don't get hurt?
Yes, 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 yes.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, the retention ponds, we've seen the young kids go down into the pond, they drop down. You know, a young kid could just start rolling and wind down at the bottom of the, of the retention pond. And we've had enough incidences of that in the Columbus area in the recent two years. So, that is, is part of it. They, they've come in, we have found people using it in the middle of the night. We have found people from even outside the area that somehow has realized that this exists, and they show up in the middle of the night and try to use it. And we've, and this has been going on since some of the very first property owners bought their properties in twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen of shooing people away, putting and telling them not, this is not your property, despite a number of signs that we have posted in addition to the original one sign that said, "Private property for Mayfair bungalow homeowners only."
Are you moved, then, by the applicants stating that they would put up a, a sign to keep the kids safe and away from your gazebo?
Well, first things were, we, they asked us what signs are needed around the ponds. They asked for our recommendations. We gave them recommendations that said there should have been at least two of them facing the apartment complex. We were We were ignored. They said, "We're only buying four signs for four retention ponds," whatever the number was, and that was it. So, so it's like, we're living there, and we're being ignored for any input, which becomes a much larger issue.
Council President Harden, I would like to, I certainly want to continue. We have three other speakers that may have the same sorts of issues, and I think that we need to hear the speakers, hear what their issues are, hear the responses from, from the applicant. I think that would be helpful, because I've driven up there, and there is a sign at the gazebo, and I don't want to really go into going back and forth. I just want us to, one, I mean, there may be, if you have any other questions you have from him, please go ahead and ask any additional questions, but I would like to also hear the other speakers as well as, so we can get all the questions answered. The next speaker is Miriam White. Ms. White, good evening, and you have three minutes to make your, share your presentation, state your name and who you represent.
Good evening. My name is Miriam White, and I am a resident that is directly affected by this variance change that is requested by the developer of the 88 apartments for 5364 Thompson Road. My neighbors and I are here to ask for your help. Specifically, we are requesting that you deny this variance and tell the developer to do what they said they would do by developing single-family homes. You may have received a graphic that I have that shows the density of the apartments that are around that particular area. This apartment community, as proposed, is one of the highest densities in the area. Several apartment complexes developed by Preferred Living under various LLCs average a higher density than other non-Preferred Living communities in the same area. They have five apartment developments in this particular part of Thompson Road. There are three existing, one that is in construction for 208 units, and one that is being proposed for the additional 88 units. Together, they average 21.7 units per acre. There are three other non-Preferred Living apartment communities on Thompson Road, and they average 10.5 units. Therefore, Preferred Living's average density is more than twice than that of other apartment communities on the same road. Clearly, the Northland Community Council agreed with this assessment. They have voted 11 to 3 to disapprove this development, and we need you to support the Northland Community Council and to support us. As a council, you can deny the variance and require Preferred Living under the 5364 Thompson Road LLC to do what they said they would do, which is develop single-family homes. Single-family homes in this area would fit the footprint better. The area already has several apartment communities, and more single-family homes would offer new home buyers opportunities in this market. And it also would, single-family homes meet with the Northland plan. Along with them, the Northland plan is green space. Another option is that you can deny the variance in, as proposed, and require Preferred Living to change their plans by reducing units closer to the 10.5 per acre and more development further east and move it further east to the existing apartments. If you look at the map, it is very easy to tell that if you move the development further east to align with existing departments, apartments, it will provide a natural green space and a buffer to the homes. Again, do not forget, Preferred Living also created the Mayfair Bungalows. And when our residents were buying their...
Thank you, Ms. White. Are there any questions? She has the opportunity to come back when there is the actual, she's also signed up to speak on the variance. This is for the zoning. Is there any, any questions?
You stated that Preferred made a statement to the Northland Community Council that they were going to build single-family homes, and is your testimony that that, that changed?
So, at the time, the area that we are talking about, it was to be developed as single-family homes. And that is the information that when Preferred Living was selling the Mayfair Bungalows, told those residents that they would be single-family homes in this plot of land that we are talking about. So, now they are asking for a variance to build this multi-unit piece. And what we're saying is, if they already had designed to make single-family homes and people made decisions, understanding that that would be a phase 2, then we're asking that we hold them to what they said they would do, which was develop single-family homes.
So, your, your point of contention is you want, you want the single families. It's not really the traffic issue?
It all, it all comes together.
Okay.
So, you know, with single-family homes, you're going to have less traffic. We, you know, we talked about some of the intrusion issues. We already have plenty of apartments in that area, and they own the acreage where they're going to build another 208 apartment units. An additional 88 and converting that to single-family homes, I think, makes more sense for, more sense for the footprint of that particular area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. And certainly, we have a representative here from Preferred Living with their attorney. The next speaker is Mr., and we're taking notes, Mr. John Davis. Good evening, Mr. Davis. Please state your name and who you represent. Thank you. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Council. I'm John Davis. My wife and I reside at 6354 Thomas Jeffrey, and I'm directly across from the gazebo. And so, as a resident, I have a real concern about the changes that are being made. We talked about intrusions. We talked about people coming in. It's not just children. It's adults. They go in, they've damaged the gazebo. We've had to repair it. We have vehicles that come across a barrier, which is bollards, that are an emergency exit, that come from that apartment complex. We have vehicles that come around the bollards onto the HOA property, onto the irrigation systems, onto the lawns. We call Amazon, we call the apartment, we talk to the council. We still don't have a fence. We do want a fence. This is the first I've seen that we would have a fence. They proposed it, but now it's on the print. That's great. But now, what are we going to do about the other apartments? That apartment complex and the over 200 on the other side? Right now, we continue to have intrusions every day. Just last week, there's two apartment tenants hitting golf balls over the pond at our complex, at our cars. And then I also find, on my Ring doorbell, because I'm directly across, I see vehicles going around the bollards directly onto the property at 10:30 at night. And then also, Amazon drivers doing the same thing, driving around these bollards. We have people that park over in front of our gazebo. What do they do? They decide they're going to go over and use the complex at the apartments in the summertime so they can go ahead and enjoy the amenities there. But I have to go across and tell them they can't park there. I personally put the signs up, "No trespassing." I went after that, and I, I get abused. We have a security company now that comes in and helps to take care of this. I don't approach anybody anymore, because you don't know what's going to happen. But I've been really berated by going in there and asking people politely that they can't park there, they can't use the gazebo, it's not part of the apartment complex. It's something that's attractive nuisance, as Anthony said. So, now what do we do? We're going to have 200 more, 88 more? When's the fence going up? How are we going to keep people out from our private community? We were promised a private community. It hasn't happened. So, damage occurs. What are you going to do? You keep fighting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any questions for Mr. Davis?
One other comment I could make, is there was one on Christmas Day, 2019.
Either, Mr., either, please come toward the podium and before that, may I know, before your time ends, if you want to make one more comment.
In 2019, Christmas Day, I called the Columbus Police Department. There's a record of it. There was a car that pulled in there at a turn that we have at the end, a dead end. We have children out there playing during the time it was Christmas Day. Called the police, three squads came in, thank goodness. They asked the guy what he's doing. He's in an old Buick Le Sabre. They take him out of the car. He's got a gun. He's got a bag of substance. What's he doing there? He has an arrest warrant out for him, so they arrested him and impounded his car. We don't know what the substance was, but we saw it all happen. The apartments are there. We've had issues with those apartments, too. Just check the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I'm going to also ask, before we have the applicant come to the podium, I'm going to ask, since people, certainly has been some discussion today regarding the, the community council's vote was 11, 3 to 2, I'm going to ask Dave Paul to come to the podium and make any comments regarding the, this application. Good evening, Mr. Paul.
Good evening. Chair Tyson, thank you very much, President Harden, members of council. Always good to speak with you. I appreciate your time. I did not make prepared comments, but I'm going to try to address your question, and if I could just kind of briefly recap the NCC's role in this discussion.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. As many of you know, the Northland Community Council acts as sort of a de facto area commission in the 25-square-mile area of Columbus, where we've long performed that role, even before there was an area commission system. And we appreciate the opportunity to continue doing that. We take it, we take it seriously. We try not to take ourselves too seriously while we're doing it. In this particular case, this project was scheduled to be heard at NCC in April of 2020, so last year. As others have mentioned, it was right at the beginning of the pandemic, and we had just actually come back from a brief hiatus, doing virtual meetings among the first in Columbus to do them, do them among area commissions and civic bodies. We met with the applicant. We heard what they were proposing. We also heard from a large number of residents, mostly residents of the Mayfair condominiums, Mayfair Bungalows next door. And ultimately, our committee suggested to the applicant, first of all, that they work with the Mayfair community. As you've heard, there are a number of issues there that pertain not just to the zoning, but also to the relationship between Preferred Living and the folks who bought property from them there. That's obviously not within our scope, but we did think that they should work together to try to resolve some of those community members' issues and hopefully find some common ground. Our committee also felt the density was far higher than we felt was appropriate in this area as a transitional use between the multifamily to the east and the single-family homes in the Mayfair Bungalows. We felt very much that a lower density would be appropriate. We had proposed a number of other numbers. The original proposal that we heard was 96 units. At our suggestion, the applicant tabled their case and went to work, making a number of changes in their product. They came back to us in September of last year. The density was still at 94 units on the site, and our committee, although there were some changes certainly, still felt that it really was far too dense in application, not one they could support. As you know, we have, or at least we feel, we have two responsibilities. One is to evaluate applications as they come to us based on our knowledge of the area, our knowledge of zoning practices, our knowledge of the communities that are resident in the Northland area and so forth, and make good recommendations to the developers, as well as to see council and, and various boards and commissions. The other is to lift up the voices of the residents of our communities. In this case, in September, our committee felt that they still could not support this app, this application at a density of 94 units per acre, or not, sorry, not 94 per acre, total of 94 units. It was still too high. There was some side discussions with the applicant's attorney about a slightly lower number of units. Committee just felt it wasn't, there wasn't enough there. So, our committee did recommend disapproval. In the meantime, between September 2020 and now, and in fact, also the appearance of the Development Commission, the applicant has continued to work on the project. As you've heard, they've moved buildings. They've committed to additional screening and setbacks, to providing a fence and so forth. I think they're all improvements to the application. I think it's a much better application, and I think that that's a positive. I want to give them some props for that. But our committee still cannot support the application based on its current zoning. We still feel that the density is too high. There are concerns about infrastructure. We also had some concerns about traffic impacts and other things that are still largely unaddressed in the current application. So, the committee's opinion is still the same, that we think this application should be disapproved. But we appreciate your time, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Again, I think the dense, I think the, it's now 88 units as opposed to 94, if I'm not mistaken, there are 88. Is that correct?
The current proposal is 88.
Yes, correct. And, and I know that you and I had conversations. I knew exactly what you were going to, you know, share today, and I think it was great for you to continue to share with council what you, when you're making your decision, how you make those decisions, especially you listen to the, the residents who are there and what their thoughts and concerns were. And we certainly heard our office from the community in regards to some of the concerns with the individuals in the Mayfair Bungalows based upon it being, you know, a condo project, the HOA fees, and, you know, we heard that also, and how we're going to kind of, how would this applicant resolve some of those issues, as well as, as you mentioned, kind of, the density is still an issue. Are there questions that you have for Mr. Paul?
Appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
And now, I'm going to ask for Mr. Hodge to please come to the podium and begin to address some of the issues that we certainly heard from the applicant today. Hopefully, you may, I'm sure you're probably taking notes so that you can, if not, we, all right, we have notes here to try to resolve some, talk about some of the issues that were brought up by the applicant, not by the applicant, by the community.
Sure, thank you. I do, I did take some notes, and we'll try to address each of the things that folks from Mayfair Bungalows and Mr. Paul addressed. First, with reference to the traffic review and some mention of why weren't adjacent developments considered in terms of that traffic impact study. That was in reference to some development that is currently going to occur up here, north and east of the site. That property was already zoned, so that was all background traffic, didn't need to be contemplated in terms of the traffic analysis. Councilmember Faver, you asked a question of the, of the public service and traffic management about the traffic analysis done here, and really, the answer that I believe that was provided is that 88 units don't generate enough trips at peak to warrant a full-blown traffic impact study. And that's not just based upon whimsy, right? That's based upon current best practices for, for traffic engineering and traffic management. So, Preferred Living did traffic analysis that was required by the engineering, and they, they worked through that with the Public Service Department, which ended up settling on this access point and, and also concluding that no road improvements were warranted out to Thompson Road. If, if road improvements had been warranted, turn lanes and such, they would have been made. Lots of discussion about, you know, intrusions into the Mayfair Bungalows, and that's why we are talking about the commitment to not just do the we are talking about the commitment to not just do the fencing along the western portion of the property, but come off-site up to the north and northeast. Now, they're right. They may not have seen this plan before. I don't know, this other plan that I showed you with the red fencing, I don't know. But in, in zoning, we're only really able to commit in this process to what happens on the site. Shannon Pine and Chris Presutti and her staff won't let us make commitments to, to things off-site, but we've said that we would enter into a good neighbor agreement, whether that's with Preferred Living in the Mayfair Bungalows, Preferred Living in Northland Community Council, or just a, just a straight-up commitment that gets made. You know, I, I like coming to Columbus City Council meetings and being, being known as somebody that tells the truth. If I say, stand here and say we're going to put up a fence and don't put up a fence, then my goose is cooked. And so if I stand here and tell you we're going to put up the fence, we're going to put up the fence. Now, that's going to address the intrusions into the gazebo issues with the, with the, with the pond, et cetera. There was some discussion about home values. You know, I, I don't, I don't have a study in my hand that I can pass around to this council about home values when multifamily residential occurs on an adjacent property, but I'd be willing to wager that many of you have seen such studies as we've been contemplating housing in our community. And it's just, it's just not true that when you build apartments next to single-family houses that it has a, a negative impact on values. One of the problems we're having is that values are way out of whack. We talked, I talked earlier about the rental price is going up from the first quarter of 2020, 13.1% to now, and our single-family houses are just out of control. You don't, you don't even have to talk to a Realtor. I mean, you tell somebody you want to sell your house, and it's sold for, for way more than you ever imagined. So that's among the reasons we need more. I just do not subscribe to the notion that this is going to be negative to the values of Mayfair Bungalows. There was discussion about, about Preferred Living controlling the Homeowners Association. Certainly a lot of water under the bridge between Preferred Living and the owners at Mayfair, but the statement that was made is that that was done so that Mayfair would not oppose this zoning. Again, that's just not true. When you do a zoning like this, surrounding property owners are provided notice 125 feet around the perimeter of the property. They're provided notice for Development Commission by law. They're provided notice to, to this meeting this evening before council by law. And the Northland Community Council process also obligates a property owner to send letter to, letters to adjacent property owners. So the Mayfair folks have been notified of this proposal throughout, and I, I've been doing zoning in this community for a long time. I know that when you do a zoning, you provide those, those notices and that those people are going to be notified. With reference to the density, you know, this is, I believe this math is 23.4 units an acre. I believe what Ms. White said is that the other Preferred Living projects in the area are 21.7 an acre. So we are talking about, you know, a, a total of five or six units across the entirety of this property. It's a, it is really a de minimis difference, and certainly when the PUD that allowed apartments to the south, apartments to the north, apartments to the east went in place, we were at a different point in time in our community. And 21.7 dwelling units an acre is not excessively dense or intense for three and three-quarters acres here. With reference to the history of what was represented to Mayfair people about what was going on to this property, I don't know if somebody over there trying to sell a house made a statement. I've, I've heard that in the 20 or so years since I've been doing this. I've heard that salespeople say things like that, but, but neither Preferred Living nor I have any knowledge that anybody made a statement that this was going to develop with single-family residential. Preferred Living is an apartment developer. It's what they've done in this community over and over and over again. I think their one foray or venture into single-family residential is the Mayfair We did reduce the density. It is down to 88. 88 is an appropriate density on the property. I, I know Mr. Davis spoke again to the gazebo intrusions and general intrusions over into Mayfair Bungalows. We are willing, really the request came from them to, to build the six-foot fence. It may vary down to four to accommodate this owner here, just because they like their view, but we've committed to do that fence all along our perimeter and off-site all along theirs up to the north and east. That's a lot, and I'm out of breath in this mask, but I'll do my best to answer any questions that members of council have.
I think there are some questions, and so around this, I mean, there's a couple of things. So one, I definitely have seen the gazebo, and when you drive down that street, it's a, the gazebo is in an, is in an interesting location, because it really does appear that the gazebo, you may think that the gazebo belongs to the apartment complex that's right there, I mean, there. And so I think that fencing would be appropriate to be able to make sure that, that, that gazebo does not belong to the apartment complex, because I thought, I mean, I literally did when I drove over to the project. So I, and I, and I think I mentioned that. So I think we, there needs to definitely, if this is going to move forward, that was one issue that, you know, how do you, how, how would you control from your, this development, maybe this is a preferred, this is a preferred development should this happen, what, what are they, what would they, what kind of plans would they put in place to ensure that individuals that would be living in that building and the other apartment units are not going to be intruding upon the space that belongs to Mayfair? Two, I think the other was about people getting into the retention pond, safety issues. Can you address those, please?
Sure. So the fence that we're talking about, which is going to come up, and that's, and that's the gazebo there, that's a, that's a, that's an apartment building that's due north of us, so we're here. This fence that I'm talking about is going to make it exceptionally inconvenient for anybody in the apartments to get over to the gazebo or to the retention pond. You know, right now, as it stands, I'm going to do this, and you can see me on the screen. So right, right now, as it stands, someone who lives here can, can simply, you know, walk out their door and walk over there to the pond, or walk out their door and walk over to the gazebo. Same true, same is true for, for, for any of the apartments over here to the east of the property. So when you put the fence in, it's going to make it very inconvenient for people to do. They'll have to get down here on Thompson, come up and walk back through the neighborhood to do that. Now, the other thing is signage. You know, we can certainly commit here this evening to, to, to work in earnest with the Mayfair Bungalows to, to put up adequate signage at both the retention pond and the gazebo to let folks know that it's for private use of the Mayfair Bungalows neighborhood.
And again, there's been no comment, you, from Preferred Living, Living has never stated that there were going to be single-family homes behind the single-family, behind the bungalows, is that correct? Not, did Preferred say, say that?
To, to my knowledge, Preferred Living did not say that. I didn't say it. We didn't say it to the Northland Community Council. Whether or not a salesperson that was over there trying to sell said something, Councilmember Tyson, I, I just can't say. I, I don't know what, what folks may have said that, that's trying to sell something. But in terms of what we have said, in terms of what I have said, in terms of what Jared Smith has said to Northland Community Council and others, we've never said that, that this was going to be developed with single-family homes.
Okay. Yes, Council, Councilmember Faver.
What about, I think somebody mentioned private security, but just thinking about how we can provide peace of mind to residents that are already there. I, I think, you know, the idea of the fences is good and signs are good, but what else can you proactively do to address these concerns? I mean, they're, they're well-received concerns, in my opinion, and things that should have definitely been worked out before we got here to this moment. And so I would love to hear what your thoughts are on that.
Well, in terms of, in terms of what we've proposed here this evening, Councilmember Faver, you know, with, with the perimeter and with the signage, we haven't really given a tremendous amount of thought to, to, to what else may be warranted under the circumstances. We felt that, that this is going to make it a pretty significantly different situation out there post-development than, than is, than it is currently. As I mentioned a second ago, it's going to be very inconvenient for people to, they're going to have to really go out of their way to get over there and use that gazebo, or, or get over there and get in that retention pond. And certainly, kids aren't going to be over there doing it. I mean, we can't control adults. The way, the way it currently exists is to get into Mayfair, you come over here, you know, up this road that comes off of Thompson Road, and, you know, who's to say that anybody, you know, you or I or anybody can't go out and, and drive that and get in that? I don't, you know, I don't know what, what else we could do. You know, one, one thing that comes to mind, though, as we have this conversation, is to, is to have signage out at the entryway that says, you know, private neighborhood amenities, gazebo amenity is, is a private gazebo or something, so that you know just as soon as you get, get into the access point what you're getting into.
Yeah. It just, it, it sounds like there, there may need to be some other measures that are taken. I don't want to dismiss the, the community's concerns about safety and intrusion, but if we're also hearing that Amazon drivers are making mistakes and taking wrong paths, obviously signage is a, is a problem.
Yeah, and we're, and we will, you know, work with, work with the city's Public Service Department or whoever to, to install the appropriate kind of signage as, as wayfinding and to let folks know sort of what they're getting into when they enter into the Mayfair neighborhood. Certainly happy to do that.
Thank you.
Now, David, since I've driven, I drove over every street that's, every street that's out there in Mayfair, and, and to the, into the neighborhood, and to the, to Mayfair, up and down the streets. And so, I mean, it's not like there are a ton of streets because of there's only so many bungalows that are there. I mean, it isn't a place that people just kind of think just drive, would just come into that community if you didn't know it was over there. My question is, and this is maybe a question for you or for Jared, to be able to, you know, have you had a number of complaints around safety in this neighborhood? Because I just...
Yeah, so...
Jared, do you know?
Come up.
So...
And I think, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Councilmember Tyson, but is the question complaints from, from Mayfair residents or from folks in general, or?
Just overall, because I don't want, you know, people start talking about safety. I mean, that's, I, I think it could be, it's, it can be, it can be very subjective as to what safety is. Some people say it's not safe because someone steals change out of your, the pocket, out of your car, you know, the, and, and that's money is left up in your car, change, girl, it don't feel safe. I'm not trying to diminish anyone about being safe. We want to keep our residents safe. I'm just asking the question. You know, we're hearing about, you know, the kids have gone to the retention pond. You've heard these things, and, you know, we've heard some comments here tonight. My question is, you know, have there been these issues or concerns brought to your third-party, either to the third-party company that is, you know, that, that kind of is the, manages the HOA about issues around people not feeling safe? I don't know about the, if there's been any number of police calls there, but I, I just asking your thought, if you've heard anything at all about safety in this neighborhood?
From a true safety perspective, no. From a perspective of intrus, intrusions or trespassing, yes, absolutely. There has been conversations about the apartment community next door having kids or people, whatever, as we've talked about, coming over to the gazebo. But I, I have not personally heard anything about people feeling unsafe in their community right now, so.
All right, since you've certainly heard the testimony, you've also heard questions from this council, just what, you know, what can you do to, and maybe, you know, what else can you do? You heard that question. We know you're putting the fence up. Is there anything else that you can do based upon what you've heard tonight that would, that would make people feel, feel more secure within, right now, it seems like the issues are for the people in the bungalows. Is there anything that you can do in regards to this particular issue of intrusion into their community?
Not that comes to mind particularly right off the top of my head without thinking more of it. I'm sure we can brainstorm some future ideas, but for lack of better words, just to come to it immediately. I mean, these are existing issues. Obviously, I think that the neighbors' concern is, is would it or will it be exacerbated by additional apartments? I don't have any good answers for you, Councilmember Faver.
What about a memo? A memo to the apartment community, existing apartment community, reminding them that this space is privately owned and, you know, not open to the public.
We're certainly happy to do that, and I would say we're certainly happy to continue to have reminders sent to the property manager there at that community. But I would tell you, in the Mayfair homeowners' defense, I believe they've had those communications as well. But when you have, you live right next door to 528 existing apartments, obviously sometimes property managers change, the tenants that are living there change. Some people just don't listen. And I'm, again, I think what I would say the difference is, there's a difference between people walking their dogs, walking down the street. There are multiple retention ponds in the area, so this isn't the only one. I can't speak to exactly what does or doesn't happen in this retention pond, and there is a nice gazebo. We thought the most reasonable and tangible thing that we could do was put up the fence, not only on our property, but that continues to extend off property as well, so.
Senator Harden? Is that what it is?
Yeah, I think I'm okay. I mean, I guess the thing that I was thinking about is, you know, we talked a lot about the, the bungalow folks, folks who live in the bungalows, and on the other side of this is, are the apartment complexes. Have we heard any comments or feedback from the folks who live in apartments about the complex? I mean, they're, they're folks, too, so I just wonder if they're, what the feedback is from the north of the property.
Not to my knowledge, no. We haven't had any communication with people that live in the apartments, that they would be having more apartments. Obviously, we're in communication with them currently right now because of the final phase specifically up here, obviously in the construction that's going to be going on around them, making sure that just from a construction perspective, we have additional fencing and safety up from a permanent, or a temporary fencing perspective, obviously.
And Councilmember Harden, in terms of the notice that we talked about previously, you know, obviously, the notice that went out, went to everybody in this envelope, and nobody from the, either this apartment community or this apartment community showed up at either the Northland Community Council meeting or Development Commission, nor is anybody here this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Congressman Dorance?
Thank you. Is, is, Lifestyle is going to retain ownership of, of, of the development? I guess my, my question being, you know, David, you know, you've been before this body more times than I can probably count. The question being that good neighbor agreement, whoever that struck with, you know, if they develop the property and sell it off to somebody else in pretty short order, you know, that entity is not in front of us tonight. So I'm just curious, what is the long-term plan of, of ownership on this property?
Yeah, so excellent, excellent question. And the good neighbor agreement, you know, I, I know we all hear people complain about good neighbor agreements and their enforceability and, and that. And, you know, so far, we haven't found anybody that's willing to enter into the good neighbor agreement with us, you know, neither Northland nor the Mayfair Bungalows. So it, this is going to have to come in the form of something else. You know, and I don't know what, I don't know what it is. I, I honestly don't know what, how to, how to create, you know, we've even thought of whether it's a, a, a good neighbor memo or memorandum of understanding or, or something like that. You know, to me, in, in terms of what we are doing with the fencing, we're committing, we're committed to do it. It's got to be on the property line, so Mayfair has to at some point say, okay, you can come on our property line and do it. But then the fence is going to get installed, and it's going to be, it's going to be installed at the expense of Preferred Living, but thereafter, it becomes ownership of the Owners Association of Mayfair and long-term maintenance obligation from them.
Okay, but just to answer the question, so is Preferred Living planning on retaining ownership of the property that we're talking about here with this rezoning tonight?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. I know that sometimes Preferred Living does retain ownership, sometimes Preferred Living sells what it, what it constructs. An example is, is this over here. This was originally a Preferred Living development. It's not anymore. They, they at some point in the past sold that. So the answer is, I don't know specifically, but it is feasible that they would lease this up, hold it for a time, and ultimately sell the development.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, is that any different than what you've done in the past?
Is it any different?
Than what Preferred has done? I just mentioned they, they build it, they lease it. They build it, they lease it, and then they may sell it.
That is correct. And that, that's not, that's no different than just about every apartment developer in the community. There are some local people that do hold their product longer. There are others that after they build them and lease them, they ultimately get sold.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure, so one, we know that, I'm just gonna, that this project started out with, what, I think 96 units, it's 88 units. You've made concessions in terms of, you moved the garages over closest to the houses, and I know exactly, I mean, I know exactly where they are, because like I said, we've looked at the map, and I've driven over there. I know the houses that would have bud up next to the garage. You have certainly increased the west perimeter from 25 to 37 feet where the garages are. You've also increased the building setback line to 57 feet from the western perimeter. You will, you shifted the refuge area, refuge area from the west side to the east side of the building. That you added through the Development Commission commitments, eight more shade trees, 14 evergreens on the west side of the perimeter. You're going to provide the fence commitment. So we know that we also need, you know, multi-unit housing within our community. You know, the challenge what's happened here is that, you know, we have these, the bungalows, and you have, there definitely are some issues between bungalow, the bungalow owners in regard to the HOA that has, that's gotten into, that is part of this challenge. So I think today is like figuring, as for us, is to, one, decide about the 88 units, is that the appropriate use of land? Two, we've heard, hearing from what the residents' issues happen to be, and that those issues are, you know, around, you know, they want, they ask for a fence. There were some things that they've asked for that you are agreeing to do. No, you cannot go into a Good Neighbor Agreement when no one wants to go into a Good Neighbor Agreement with anybody. So the only way that it works is that whatever commitment you make to this council, that you make, that you fulfill those commitments because you will be back in this, in these chambers for other, working with other individuals and, and working for other clients, and all you have is your word that you're going to do the things that you're saying. To the residents, it really is hard, it's difficult when, I will say, the residents of Mayfair, wherever there is undeveloped land, and I've been, this has been since I've been here almost 15 years, undeveloped land next to your place, anything could go there. And people, realtor, anyone can say, this is what's going to happen. People believe that, and it's a change. You know, 10 years ago, people were building single-family, and that's not what's happening right now, or no, what is really needed. So those are all the different changes that happen in terms of zoning. In terms of this project, like I said, it is unfortunate what this relationship between Preferred and the community. I do believe that you guys have tried your best in terms of move, you know, looking at the site plan, making the changes asked by the Development Commission as well as the city staff. I would hope that, that we, there could be some additional signage, as you stated, so that, so that whether it be the Amazon driver or whomever, that they realize this is a, you know, kind of a private community, that our Mayfair Bungalows are, is a private area, private, but doesn't say deliveries can't come through, that the people that, as Councilmember Favre mentioned, there needs to be some ongoing communications and with the apartments that are right there that are asking, letting them know that, you know, this neighborhood is a private development. Now, does that mean a private development, people can't walk their dogs in there? I mean, you can't stop some of those things happening, but we want to make sure that at least people know that that gazebo, which will be fenced, is not for them to use, et cetera. Are there any other issues or things before we try to decide if we want to vote on this legislation? Any questions or thoughts? Well, again, I certainly do appreciate all the conversations that have been had with, I know my team, I certainly have been involved with the developer, the number of conversations in regards to this, but just understanding what the needs are and the commitments of the fence, the commitments of signage, the commitment, commitments of letters, these are all commitments. I mean, David, Mr. Attorney Hodge, these are all commitments. Can you come back to the podium and just please say they are? The fence, things I've already talked about here in the legislation, but also maybe the letters to maybe the apartment complex that, you know, what else did I say? The letter, commitment, oh, some signage, the signage.
Those are, those are all commitments.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. All right. Based upon those commitments that were just stated by the applicant, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Doran's favor, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is a variance, is 1071 dash 2021. Is anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Thank you. This is variance, the variance is to, this ordinance is to grant a variance from the provisions of sections 3333.255, perimeter yard of plumacy codes for the property located at 5364 Thompson Road to permit a reduced perimeter yard for an apartment complex in the AR-1 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is 5364 Thompson Road LLC, care of attorney David Hodge. The proposed use of the multi-unit residential development, the C Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northland Community Council's recommendation is disapproval 11-3-2. We will, I think we just, we've had a staff presentation already, and I, but we need to have another one, because we have to accept the entire report and evidence as an exhibit.
I can be brief, councilmembers, and Councilmember Tyson, President Harden. This is a concurrent variance request to the rezoning to the AR-1 district. What this council variance is proposing is reduce perimeter yards along the north and east boundaries in order to provide a larger perimeter yard along the west in consideration of those adjacent single-unit dwellings. The variance also includes the commitment to the site plan that you see on your screen right now, and our recommendation is for approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And then that we're moving, the variance is to move, you said, to the east and to the, the east because we're trying to have, make sure there's a, so we're moving away from the west side where the, where the bungalows happen to be.
Correct.
Where the, correct.
Yeah, so the 25-foot perimeter yard is required for apartment complexes. They're proposing 15 feet along the north and the east so that they can provide a varying perimeter yard of between 37 and 57 feet along the west.
And the north and the east are closer to the other multi-unit apartments.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Pine? Saying that, I, I accept the entire report into evidence as an exhibit. And I don't know there if the applicant wants to make another presentation or not.
I don't need you, I can be on hand to answer any questions or address items raised by any given public.
Thank you. I have the first speaker is going to be Marion White. Please come to the podium. And the next one will be Mr. Kandari will be the next speaker. Please state your name and who you represent, and you have three minutes.
I'm Marion White. I am a resident at the Mayfair Bungalows. I'm here to oppose this particular variance, and mainly because when you're reading the variance, it talks about the 25 units per acre. We would like to see, and as was the commitment between 37 and 57, that's a wide range. And so one of the things that we have been experiencing with this developer is whether or not they're going to actually keep their commitments. It's good to hear that they decided that they were going to keep their commitments here tonight, but we've had experience that they have not. So what we would like to propose is that they commit to what it is. Is it 37? Is it 57? And be very clear about that. We would like to see a 57 buffer, excuse me, since the previous variance has been approved. We really want to ensure that we are clear about that and that there is no wiggle room with this particular developer. Again, as we stated, they control the HOA. They develop our properties and are developing this property. That's a lot of power in one place. So that's my objection to this particular variance.
Thank you, Ms. White. And we will, we will, it's stated in the plans what that, what that is, so we will, when they come up, they will still share that, and certainly if you need Ms. Pine to again state that, we can do that. Again, Mr. Kandari, could please come back to the podium? Please state your name, who you represent, and you have three minutes.
I'm Nick Kandari of 4128 Hannah Jane in the Mayfair Bungalows. I was researching the permits on my house, just for curiosity, looked at a number of different things, and one of the items that popped up when I was going through it was a Board of Zoning Adjustment, BZA 15-088, that was approved on August 25th, 2015. And as I read down through this, I said, oh, this is interesting, talks about reducing the lot area, reducing the building setback line, this is for all of Mayfair Bungalows, reducing the building setback line from 25 feet to 20 feet on different lots, reduce side yards, reduce the rear yard, establish a smaller perimeter yard, et cetera, change the computing of area. And finally, there's a condition, there was a vote of four to zero to approve this, and it says, "Condition: The applicant will buffer the rear of lots 13 through 20 that back up to the township parcel directly to the east to ensure development compatibility." So I contacted the individual, James Freecy, I think, that was involved in this application. I said, what does this mean, this, this condition? And he said, typically when staff request buffering, it is in the form of landscaping to hide a more intense use from a less intense use. In other words, shield our bungalows from Charlie Graham who owned 5364 Thompson Road. So all of that was approved, all those setbacks were approved on this BZA 15-088. The sales office told me that, yeah, we're going to put landscaping behind the houses. We're going to put trees in down, down that property line to shield us from, or shield Charlie Graham from us. Through our legal effort, and we've expended monies to enforce our rights under Ohio Revised Code 5312 with the developer, Preferred Living, or through any of their other various names, Grantor, Developer, Mayfair Bungalows LLC, whatever it is, we finally got the landscape plans for the development. No landscaping, no trees behind our property. All those setbacks were granted to Preferred Living to develop Mayfair Bungalows. There was one condition that was put on that BZA 15-088, which was, you know, they'll buffer the rear of the lots. Five-plus years later, it wasn't done. I don't want trees now, it might obstruct my view a little bit, but the point is, they didn't meet that commitment after they got everything they asked for. How do we have commitments? How do we expect, how do we have the trust that they're going to honor these other commitments that they committed to this tonight? That's my comments concerning opposition to this ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate that comment, and we will talk to them about, you know, for us, they have, for us, if it's in the plan, we expect them to meet their commitments. We expect them to do what they say they're going to do, and we will have them come to the floor to address these issues because you, they have to do that. And if you don't, you know, again, so are there any questions? We'll have them come up and address these issues if they did not do it on the bungalows, just ask them why. If they did them, we want to hear from them and, and what the commitment is about doing and making sure that what we would have in this variance, that they would absolutely do it, so, thank you.
May I make one brief statement?
Yes.
I and our other homeowners, in good faith, we read our covenants of the HOA, we read our sales documents, and we bought our homes in good faith that Preferred Living would carry through and fulfill in good faith that they would sell all the houses in the community. My statement is, they haven't acted in good faith, they continue to rent a home, and they keep us from control of our HOA. I know that's not part of the zoning application, but again, my point is, I bought in good faith, I read the documents, and I expected a developer from all my past experience for homes that I've built in the past, that they build me a home and fulfill their requirements. Thank you.
Mr. Hodge, can you please come up and address the issues that have been brought up based upon, regarding this variance?
So with reference to the commitment that's being made with this zoning and council variance, the site plan that you've seen repeatedly tonight is a part of the legislation that would get adopted. It's what Ms. Pine said in her introductory remarks. So what happens is, what you see is what you get. Beyond here, they can't get engineering approved, they can't get building permits approved, they can't get site compliance for zoning, they can't get any approvals beyond here unless what is shown throughout the remainder of this permitting process is what is shown on this site plan. Because the zoning reviewers, the buildings plans reviewers, they go back and look at the legislation. We have an obligation to provide the legislation as we go beyond here into permitting. So what is here is what is going to get constructed on the property. The locations of all the buildings, setback along the western perimeter, the setbacks that we're talking about here on the northern and the eastern perimeter. In addition, architecture that is substantially similar to this architecture is what will be built on the property. Not anything that anybody talked about, but that's, that's part of, part of what is happening here. Now, in terms of a Board of Zoning Adjustment approval for the Mayfair Bungalows to the west, that was news to me. I never heard that before. If there was, and so I haven't reviewed that information, I haven't read that information, but if there was an obligation by the Mayfair Bungalows developer to make an installation of fencing or buffering or landscaping, then that remains an existing obligation, and it's, and it's got to get done. If, if it didn't happen, then it was obviously an oversight. I haven't read that, I don't know anything about it, but if it's, if it's in, if it's a condition of the BZA, then it's, then it's a legal obligation to do it.
Well, you know, what we could do, we've already given you one approval, maybe we shouldn't approve this one tonight. And maybe what we should do is give you an opportunity to go and to research this issue and come back and tell us if that was a part of it, and tell us why it hasn't been done and when it will be done. So what I think I'm going to do is I am going to table this variance to, for you to go and to figure out what, if there was commitments made in this particular regard that was not done, then I want to hear, you know, either way, if it's done, that's great, you can come and tell us that next week, we can try to move this forward. If it wasn't done, you have to tell us how this is going to get resolved and move forward. This has been an interesting night for Preferred, and I, you know, we've been a great developer, and we're not trying to, look, this is just, it's been an interesting evening, and I will just ask, I think I'm going to move to table this until next week. You guys can come back and give us the answers, and then we will put this back on, you know, it'll be table on the agenda for next week, and hopefully we can move forward. So I'll move to table this for one week.
Madam Chair, would you like to move to accept the report first and then...
Oh, yeah, let me go back and, yeah, I'll move to, since we've had a report. Well, we'll probably have to, well, I move to adopt the findings of the staff as to the findings of council. Thank you.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown Dorans, Favor, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you, and I'll table this for one week.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown Dorans, Favor, Tyson, President Harden.
Table for one week.
Thank you, that concludes the zoning agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks.
Seeing no further business coming from the zoning communities, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown Dorans, Favor, Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned, have a good evening, everyone.